Thank you. Okay, then I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Council of the Town of Oliver Monday, April 12th to order. And I will ask the C A O if there are any late items.
There are no late items, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? And does anyone oppose? Motion carries. And can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of the March 22nd Committee of the Whole meeting?
Move.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? And does anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to item F1 of Water Matters, Water Utility Leak Adjustment Policy Review. And I will turn it over to the Deputy Financial Officer for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of my report today is to present council with a comprehensive water utility leak adjustment policy review to ensure the policy is still achieving its original intent. Options for council is they may rescind the water utility leak adjustment policy. They may amend the policy, or they may retain the existing policy. Some background on the current policy in place at the July 25, 2016 regular council meeting. Council approved the current water utility leak adjustment policy. A copy of the policy approved by council is attached for council's reference. A leak notification service has been in effect since water metering was introduced in 2010. Financial relief or leaks was introduced by council in 2012. The original intent for council for implementing a water leak notification policy was to address the numerous leaks found on our water metering saw in our meter reading software when the system first went live over 10 years ago. The council of the day felt it was a necessary courtesy to our customers. My report goes on to give a brief policy overview, and I'll just skip that. I'm just assuming council has gone over it. I'm gonna get into the meat of the report here. The leak notification letters, section 3.4 of the Water Utility Leak Adjustment Policy lays out guidelines for sending out leak letters to residents who have suspected water leaks. The town currently reads meters and sends leak letter notifications monthly. Under the current policy, the town will send the property owner a maximum of three leak notification letters, after which time letters will cease to be mailed. In 2020, an average of 70 leak notification letters were sent monthly. It takes the town's utility technician approximately three hours per month to prepare and send out leak notification letters. On average, the utility technician receives responses back on 11% of total leak notifications sent, which is an additional seven hours per month in leak investigations. We currently read meters monthly to provide this service, which roughly takes our utility technician an additional nine hours per month over his quarterly reads for billing purposes. The town does not receive any direct benefit for providing this service. It is strictly for the benefit of the end user. This monthly process costs the town posted staff time, vehicle costs, and overhead. Taking into account all the additional hours required to provide this service, finance staff have estimated the monthly cost to the town to be roughly $1,000 or $12,000 per year. It should also be noted that leak notifications have been on the decline each month since the implementation of this policy. When the system was first introduced, there were many more leaks discovered compared to today's figures. As residents are notified leaks of leaks, they get fixed, which has contributed to much lower occurrences. Leak adjustments. The following table summarizes the number of total dollar amounts of leak adjustments approved each year since 2016. Since the policy took effect in 2016, 22 leak adjustments have been approved totaling almost $35,000. The average leak in cubic meters per approved leak adjustment since 2016 is about 2,000 cubic meters. The average number of approved leak adjustments per year since 2016 is about five. This averages to about 10,000 cubic meters in leak adjustments per year. To put this in perspective, in 2020, the town billed for 1.48 million cubic meters of water consumption, with leak adjustments on average representing 0.68% of total billings. Other local governments such as Penticton and Kelowna do not currently have a water leak adjustment policy, nor do they send out leak notifications to customers. Summerland and Peachland currently have a similar water leak policy in place comparable to the towns. The water leak policy is a service provided to the town's water utility customers. It is up to council to determine if this service is a worthwhile investment for the town and its water utility customers. Staff feel the current leak adjustment policy has served its purpose well. The initial implementation met its intended purpose by discovering numerous leaks, which has contributed to a much more stable system today. Factoring in the cost of administering the policy, a move from a proactive based system to a complaint based system would dramatically cut costs, but would also allow users of the water utility to apply for leak adjustments if they should occur. Staff have reviewed the water regulation bylaw and have determined the recommended changes would not require an amendment to the bylaw. And that sums up my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Financial Officer and Mayor and Councilor. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Mattes.
Thank you, Chair. Not really any questions, but my comment would be I certainly support going to quarterly meter readings, which would cut a lot of the work involved down. But I think we could also continue giving the water leak notices on a quarterly basis rather than on a monthly basis. Again, that would theoretically cut some of the work down, but not eliminate it completely. If we are letting people know that they have a leak, then that will cut down the probability that we will have to do leak adjustments. So I think the cost benefit there, one supports the other. So I would support amending the policy to quarterly readings and quarterly leak adjustment notices. Or quarterly leak notices, I would say.
Thank you, Counselor Mattes. Counselor Ventimilla.
Thank you, Chair Grace. I was going to ask if that's something that would be possible because it puts us in a position of still being proactive, but not necessarily quite so frequently. If it is possible, and I completely support that idea.
Thank you, Counselor Ventimilla. Is that a question for the Director of Operations?
Sure.
Or I'm asking Director of Operations? There was a head shake.
Okay, I'll ask the C A O who I can direct that question to then, please.
Thank you, Counselor Grace. And the question was with regards to the proactiveness?
We are currently doing things on a monthly basis. If we went strictly quarter with the same system, would that be any type of issue doing that?
No.
Right now, we read monthly and we send out notices monthly. If we were to read quarterly and send out notices quarterly for leaks.
Yeah, it would be, it would just go with the billing at the same time. So no, there's no issue to doing it that way if you choose to change the policy to have it quarterly notices and quarterly readings. Is that the question?
That's the question.
Yeah, it's just a change in the administration of the policy and the service, which would, it could provide, it wouldn't be as administrative. The administrative part of it would be more efficient. You wouldn't be doing it on a monthly basis.
Thank you, C A O. Counselor Ventimilla, if you still have your hand up?
Yeah, so then knowing that it's possible, again, I support that idea. It's not perhaps as quickly, like as efficient as what we're doing right now, but it still puts us in a position of being proactive rather than reactive or rather than working on a complaint based system. And I just think that puts us in a stronger position. It seems that we're constantly looking for ways to be proactive. So to take something that while it's, you know, perhaps costly, it is a benefit to our user, a service that we provide. And so to take something that's working and just completely eliminate it and flip it around and make it reactive instead of proactive. That doesn't sit well with me. So just lessening the frequency seems like a good sort of middle ground.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Ventimilla. And Town of Oliver co-host, I'm assuming is Mayor Johansson. So if that's you, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. It is the Town of Oliver co-host here. I do agree with that approach. I think it is important to still give out leak notifications. We don't have too many slopes in the town, but there is some up above where I live. And I know that water can do some pretty significant damage to the slope if it isn't noticed in a timely manner. And so giving out those notifications may may head off some potential challenges. Some of the infrastructure in the town, probably limited, but still a good idea. So I would support the motion that if there is a leak notified, that at least the property owner is notified and that they are made aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. Counselor Schwarzenberger, so your hand is up. The C A O is her hand up as well. Do you mind if I defer to her first in case she has some clarifying remarks?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, C A O.
Not necessarily clarifying remarks, but I wanted to ask the Deputy Finance Officer, if he is aware of how many letters go out on a monthly basis?
Seventy.
Oh, seventy? Okay.
Send the report.
For Counselor Mattes, I'll ask until you're called upon before you speak, please. Thank you. To the Deputy Financial Officer, did you want to answer that question?
That is correct. Through to the Chair, that is correct. Seventy.
Thank you. And Counselor Schwarzenberger, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with my colleagues. So I would make the motion, just change slightly, that council amend the water leak utility, the water utility leak adjustment policy from a monthly notification to a quarterly notification.
Thank you. As we have a motion on the table, is there a seconder?
That motion isn't right.
Is what is written, not what Counselor Schwarzenberger said?
No, it's not.
It should be a quarterly notification from a monthly notification, leak notification.
Once it's written correctly, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the word billing should be there, but.
No, it shouldn't be.
I would jump in, but I'm not allowed.
You are certainly welcome to put your hand up. I believe that was seconded by Counselor Ventimilla. That council amend the administration of the water utility leak adjustment to a quarterly notification from the monthly notification process. And C A O.
Sorry. I still don't think it's properly written. It should read that council amend the policy the water utility leak a policy from a monthly notification to a quarterly notification. Or whatever.
Counselor Schwarzenberger, does that work for you?
Yeah, I'll take that as a friendly amendment from the C A O.
I wasn't amending it. I was just, it wasn't.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yes, that's fine.
Properly.
And Counselor Ventimilla, you're okay as well? As the seconder?
Sorry, I gave you the thumbs up. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I can't see everyone. Any further discussion? And does anyone oppose? Thank you. The motion carries. Moving on to item F2, 2020 Annual Water Report, and I will turn it over to the Director of Operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the annual water report that's forwarded to Interior Health Authority each year. But it's a document that updates council and the public on all water related works in the Town of Oliver for 2020. Also has some history. It outlines how the systems run. So that's why I H A likes that we likes us to do it every year. And then that way, people, if they're looking for information, they can understand the system better and find it on our website. It is a, it's part of our conditions of permit for our water licenses. So I just, all I did was touch on a few highlights. I can go through a few of them. And the report's attached. And if there's any questions after that, you can let me know. So as some of you know, we have 2,400 domestic services, 174 commercial industrial, and over 600 irrigation connections. So that's we have 6,200 acres of farmland irrigation. And for our overall consumption of water, that would be groundwater and surface water. 24% of it is domestic water, and the remainder is irrigation water. It's estimated that the residential use of this water is both 13.6% and industrial, commercial, institutional use 5.4. Agricultural groundwater uses 5.2. And the remaining is surface water agriculture, which is the canal system. Some of the projects we completed in 2020, and some of them may have started in 2019, but the Flume 3 seismic structural remediation project was completed. COBO irrigation control and electrical upgrades was completed. And I know our rural water operators are quite happy with that. They get less callouts to that pump house now during the year. Gallagher Siphon reroute started, as everyone knows. We had the Outfall Culvert repair on Road 11. That started and was 90% completed in in 2020. We had some issues with our drain pipe from our main reservoirs in town, and we had to remove old wood stave pipe debris. And then we finances continuously changing out water meter replacements. So that continues. We did some System 5 reservoir communication upgrades. We used to have communication to a lot of our older reservoirs using hardwire or in-ground lines, and they keep getting damaged over the years. And so we've tried to make improvements by wireless. We've started risk assessments and potential hazards on the canal system. Miller Road Pump House, we've replaced our chlorine pump pumps that we were having problems with. And radio modem upgrade at Tuckalnewitt. And we look after 300 testable backflow preventer devices in the water systems in our cross connection control program. So some of the, those were some of the highlights of the report. And if anybody else had any particular questions, I could try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Director of Operations and Mayor Johansson.
Thank you, Chair. To the Director of Operations, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on page 12. It shows, it says that Oliver consumed 4.88% more water than the previous year in 2019. Yet the graph kind of indicates that we use less water in 2020. So I was just trying to see which one was correct.
Yeah, I believe I, on page, sorry, what page of the report?
It was on page 12 of, I guess, our council report. Or no, no, I have the report. So yeah, page 12 has graph figured.
Oh, okay. I believe I did notice that. I was going through the reports. It was quite confusing. I think it was the way we worded it. And I did find, when I read through the report again, I found a couple of small errors in the report. So that the consume more water than the previous year. Yeah, I think it's the way it's worded. In 2019, I think it's just saying that in 2019, we consume 4.88 more than we did in 2020. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just at the end of the day, we use less water in 2020. We're trending in the right direction, at least.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, it's, as you can see by the graph, it's, it seems to be on a downward trend overall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. Any other questions or comments? I'll just say I actually really enjoyed the history portion of the report. So it's really thorough, and thank you for that. Counselor Ventimilla.
Just on that last comment, trending in the right direction, that's actually surprising and something to be really proud of if it's true, because I would have assumed that we use more water in this last year, being that people have been at home a lot more, gardening a lot more, all of those sorts of things. So if we are down 4.88%, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Counselor Ventimilla. And if there are no other questions or comments, we do have a motion on the table that the 2020 annual report be received. If I have a mover.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. And a seconder, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Ventimilla. Any further discussion? Does anyone oppose? The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item H1, Age Friendly Assessment and Action Plan, March 2021 Report with Eco Plan International. We have Kathleen Hegi, the Planning Associate, and Anne Marie Whitaker, Senior Associate and Planner. So I will turn it over to them.
Great, thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody here. I will just share my screen and bring up the PowerPoint. Is that showing well for everybody?
Looks good. Yes, thank you.
Great. So yes, hello, and thanks very much for having us here. My name is Kathleen Hegi, and I'm a planner with Eco Plan International. Also on the line, we have Anne Marie Whitaker, who is a senior planner with Eco Plan as well. And we are here today to present the Oliver Age Friendly Draft Assessment and Action Plan, which we've been working on over the last 10 months, most closely with Corporate Officer Diane Bakovich, and we are excited to share what we've come up with. So just to make sure we're all starting from the same page, although I'm sure you're all familiar, what is an age-friendly community? So it's a place that supports people of all ages to actively participate in their community. It's somewhere where everyone is treated with respect regardless of their age, and it's a place that facilitates older adults, older adults and seniors to stay connected and active in their communities. And so while the focus is on those who are 55 years and above most of the time, an age-friendly community benefits people of all ages. And this way of thinking about age friendliness comes from the World Health Organization's framework on, and building an age-friendly world. And so why is this important for the Town of Oliver? Well, Canada as a whole is an aging population, and so communities across the country are undertaking this kind of work. And that's no different in the Town of Oliver. So the Town of Oliver is an aging community as well, with a higher median age than the provincial average and an aging population. And these shifting demographics mean that there's going to be a shift in the needs and demands of the community when it comes to things like medical services, housing, accessibility, and et cetera. And again, while the focus is on older adults and seniors, it's important to remember that what's good for older adults and seniors is really good for the whole community when it comes to things like attracting newcomers, building stronger social networks across age groups, and in general, it makes for a more welcoming and attractive community design. So in terms of how we went about this process, starting back in July 2020, we kind of broke it out into three different phases. So in phase one, it was a startup and the age-friendly assessment. So we started out by putting together a community profile that highlighted some of those demographic trends, explained why the project is important, and then we mailed that out across the community to let people know that the project was happening. We then struck a working group with nine organizations represented, including Counselor Amy Grace. So thanks very much for representing council on our working group. We also had Oliver Parks and Rec, Interior Health, the Pickleball Club, the Chamber of Commerce. So a cross-section of groups who represent or support age friendliness in a variety of ways. And the purpose of that working group was to guide the project, support engagement, and provide key input throughout the, all three phases. We also, in phase one, did a background research and review of past plans, which I'll touch on again briefly. Phase two is when the bulk of our community engagement happens. So we put out a community-wide survey asking people what's working well and what could be improved when it comes to Oliver's age friendliness. We did a bunch of phone calls and interviews with various community organizations who are also working towards age friendliness. And I'll show some numbers on the next slide of how this engagement went. And then in that second phase, we did the assessment of how Oliver is doing when it comes to age friendliness. And that draft assessment led to a draft action plan, which kind of kicked off phase three. We reviewed those draft actions with Town of Oliver staff, and then we put them in a plan on a page and sent that around to the entire community again and asked them to review what we'd come up with and let us know what their priorities were and if we missed anything. And then finally, here we are today, bringing the draft report and action plan to you. So overall, the engagement response was pretty strong to the first survey, which we did last fall. We had 160 responses. And that was when we asked folks to tell us what was working well and what could be improved when it comes to the eight features of age friendliness, which I'll explain later. As I mentioned, we had three working group meetings throughout the process. We did 12 phone calls and interviews with different stakeholder groups. We had ongoing communications on the Town of Oliver's website, social media. We used, we made sure to use local print news, so it's been inclusive of those who aren't online and word of mouth, that kind of thing. And then towards the end of the project, we sent around that plan on a page and got 145 responses then. And we were still receiving responses actually past the deadline. So it was a pretty strong response rate overall. Also, as part of phase one, we made sure to review this list of past plans here. And that was just to make sure that the age-friendly plan that we were going to come up with would fit with and build on current planning policies and work that was already underway. And the great thing was that Oliver already has a lot of age-friendly strengths. So lots to build on. And so just to kind of clarify how the two pieces fit together, first, we did the assessment, and that was a framework that was based on the age-friendly features that are going to come up in the next slide to understand what was working well and what could be improved. And we filled those in with our own research and then a lot of the engagement from the first two phases. And that informed the action plan. So we took ideas for what could be improved and changed and framed them as actions. And that was reviewed, as I mentioned, during phase three. And so thinking about the eight features of age friendliness, these also come from the World Health Organization's framework of age friendliness. And so we looked at assets, challenges, and opportunities in each of these features. And so I'll just touch kind of briefly on the highlights of what we found. But of course, the full report contains more information on what we found under each of these categories. So first, when it comes to public outdoor spaces and public buildings, we learned that there's overall pretty good accessibility. People did want to see more public washrooms and parks and public spaces, and that was the number one barrier identified to using these spaces. There's generally a good sidewalk network, and there were some ideas for improving those and outdoor spaces, such as more lighting to make it feel safer and that kind of thing. And we did note, too, that the town has plans to improve parks and outdoor spaces in certain areas, such as those listed in the Parks Improvement Plan. When it comes to accessible and affordable transportation, there are some limitations that are typical of a smaller town for folks who can't drive, such as a somewhat limited public transportation or bus route system. And when it comes to things like getting to health appointments in Kelowna or Penticton. And when it comes to things like getting to health appointments in in Kelowna or Penticton nearby, that can be a challenge, and there's no handy dart that comes through Oliver, but that there are some local strengths. So options like Better At Home offers a driving service to medical appointments. A lot of people said they rely on neighbors for rides, and there's also a strong active transportation network and a walkable sort of downtown core when it comes to walking and cycling. So that's great. When it comes to affordable and secure housing, there are various kind of options with various levels of care for seniors housing in Oliver. And we found that compared to what's going on throughout the rest of the province, the affordability challenge is is lower when it comes to the number of people who spend more than thirty percent of their income on their housing. But there are some challenges. For example, affordable and accessible housing for those with special needs is limited, and a lot of the affordable housing isn't necessarily walkable. And so when that's combined with transportation, that can be a challenge for some people. And so next, when it comes to social participation, respect, and social inclusion, and civic participation, kind of putting those three all together, we heard that overall Oliver is a very active and involved community, and that there are a lot of opportunities for people to be involved socially and civically with events, arts and culture groups, service clubs, a lot of recreation programs, and good facilities and infrastructure. Of course, this was made more challenging during COVID nineteen. And another challenge that we heard about was just knowing what's available or getting to and from the, you know, events or options for being involved. And we also heard a desire for more intergenerational and cross-cultural events and opportunities to connect. So number seven is communication. We heard that there are a lot of different information channels and ways to get the word out in Oliver. The town has a very strong social media presence. People rely on local news a lot and word of mouth as a sort of tightly knit community. We heard that digital literacy, as can be expected, has become more important and more of a challenge during COVID nineteen. So there may be some opportunities to think of programs to address that. And as well, there's an opportunity to build on, to improve wayfinding and signage throughout the community. So finally, when it comes to community support and health services, we also heard that there are a lot of supports and services in Oliver already or nearby, but the biggest challenge is knowing what's available and how to access them. And so the number-one idea that we heard there for improvement was just more doctors and healthcare professionals. And so with an example like that and some of the other sort of areas that we touched on, sometimes these things, we know that they're outside of local jurisdiction, but it's still important to to understand what these challenges are, capture them in a plan, and then sort of identify areas to be addressed. So from that assessment, we had a lot of information. So we looked at opportunities that were identified during that assessment, and we pulled out thirty possible actions. So there's our specific policies, programs, or initiatives to improve age-friendly friendliness in Oliver. We then grouped those thirty into themes and came up with these six, six sort of higher-level action areas. So these are higher-level directions to focus the town's age-friendly work going forward. So first is to update town policy and programs with an age-friendly lens. Second is to improve communications and connections to the community for older adults and seniors. Third is to design and develop an age-friendly public realm through physical infrastructure. Number four is to support active opportunities for older adults and seniors in parks, recreation, and programming. Number five is to support existing and new ideas for age-friendly community-led initiatives and partnerships. And that is a reflection of the fact that we really wanted from the start this to be a sort of a community-led plan. So, yes, we were working with the Town of Oliver, but we also really wanted to have community members involved, and that's why the working group was involved is a part of why. And so all of the actions in that area build on work that is already happening in the community or would be good opportunities for partnerships moving forward. And then finally, number six is COVID nineteen and future resilience for older adults and seniors. And so in a nutshell or in a table, this is the action plan. So this is the list of thirty actions that were generated grouped by each action area. And so, as I mentioned, this was sent out as part of the plan on a page throughout the community, and community members were asked to indicate their top three priority actions out of the thirty. And so eleven of the actions emerged as top priorities, meaning that they were prioritized an above-average number of times, and those are indicated here with a star. So it's kind of interesting to note that they all fell within three different action areas. So public realm improvements, active opportunities, and community-led partnerships and initiatives. And so in thinking about how the action plan was actually going to be implemented, it was important to not only look at the community's priorities, but also think about what would be required for implementation when it comes to resources and capacity, et cetera, to implement all these actions. So we did a scan and assessed the levels of complexity based on the known capacity, resources, partnerships, and effort that would likely be required to implement each action or to continue implementing them, and then labeled them accordingly. So quick start, medium, or complex. And we also made sure to note when there was already work underway or completed, because as we mentioned, there's already a lot going on in support of age-friendliness throughout Oliver. And so we wanted to capture that here and include it and and sort of make sure that we can continue to build on work that's either happening by the Town of Oliver. So when it comes to things like future updates to the O C P or future housing needs reports, as well as continuing to support work that's already being undertaken by other community groups and organizations. So as part of thinking about implementation, we also looked into partnerships and funding. And so moving forward, it'll be important to sort of keep the pulse on funding opportunities. And this phase of the project was funded through the phase one of the U V C M's age-friendly funding that comes from the province. And the next phase is currently on administrative pause, but it should be opening back up any day now, so it'd be important to keep an eye out for that. In the meantime, there is also this upcoming Canada Healthy Communities Initiative, round two, another sort of relevant funding opportunity there. And then again, that emphasis on it being a community-led project and from the beginning and how to make it community-led implementation. So some key partnerships, the working group was quite successful throughout the project, and they indicated a strong interest in in staying involved in age-friendly matters and helping to implement moving forward. There will be some organizations that will be key for implementation, so groups like Oliver Parks and Recreation and Interior Health. And in working with those groups, it'll be important to think of how these actions and what's included in the action plan also aligns with and builds on those organizations' own priorities and and strategic plans. And the great thing is that there is a lot of alignment, so it's not creating a lot more new work. It's just really supporting work that's already happening. And then some key community groups initiatives. So we learned about, again, some things that are already happening that are really relevant, like tourism. Oliver is already working on a wayfinding initiative, and the Desert Sun, Desert Sun organization is just starting a TAPS program that's working towards building digital literacy for older adults and seniors. So some great community-led initiatives there to to continue supporting. So next steps, one of the first next steps will be to apply for age-friendly recognition through age-friendly B C. And that will then be passed up to the federal level as well. Another step will be to continue exploring funding and partnerships for priority projects and actions and keeping a pulse on that as well. Implementation, again, continuing to support community momentum, continuing as much as possible to work with the age-friendly working group, sharing the final plan with the communities, so so posting on the website for everybody to see. And then over time and moving forward into the future, we'll be monitoring and evaluating. So we've recommended doing an annual review of the progress in the action plan, and it will kind of automatically build on a five-year review of the strategic plan. And we've also included an age-friendly checklist, an example of what that could look like in the appendix, to monitor what sort of other projects when they come to council, whether they've considered age-friendliness in in their work as well. And that brings me to the end of our presentation. So thanks very much for listening, and feel free to let us know if there are any questions or comments.
That's great. Thank you so much for your presentation, Kathleen, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. And I will ask Mayor and Council if there are any questions or comments. I'm not seeing any hands. There is a motion, a proposed motion. But before we get to that, I think that a real key part of that report was next steps. And I think to ensure that, you know, this doesn't sort of fizzle out and go nowhere, it's going to be important for someone to ensure that all of these actions are carried forward or that someone continues to work on this. So we may want to discuss as a council, if we want to look at perhaps the is it the Healthy Healthy Living Coalition as someone who wants to carry on with this this program? My concern is that if we just receive the report and apply for recognition, then what? You know, we did a ten, a ten-month project, and what happens after that? So I'd be interested to hear from my colleagues if they have any thoughts on that. Council Mattis.
Um, thank you, Chair. It's a great report. I think it shows areas we can improve. It also shows what we're doing really well, and I think we're doing, when you look at the report, we're already doing a lot of things really well. I think it'll be important that we share this report with Oliver Parks and Rec, with Interior Health, and with the Regional District. When I look at those eleven main priorities, none of them really fall into our realm of responsibility at this point. It all falls to those other agencies. When I look at transportation improvements, that's Regional District. When I look at public washrooms, that's Parks and Rec. You know, the, when I look at the improving park spaces, that again is Parks and Rec. It's 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 outside of our realm. But the things that are in our realm of responsibility, as I read through the report, says to me that we've either undertaken virtually every one of them or are about to undertake them. So I'm not sure that anything beyond receiving the report is required at this moment. So I would move receipt of the report at this time.
Are you only moving the receipt, Council Mattis, or the entire proposed motion?
I'm not, I'm not sure. You know, before I would to say apply for the age-friendly B C recognition, there is no indication here what that means. So I'm not going to apply for something when I have no idea what it's about.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table then. Is there a second or? Sorry, go ahead.
I'll move the report as be received at this point. And when I get a clearer understanding then of the rest, then maybe I can make make another motion at that point.
Thank you, Council Mattis. I do see that there's hands up. However, we have a motion on the table, so I'm looking for a second or for the motion, please. Asking again if we have a second or?
I'll second it for discussion, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Johansson.
Through to the, yeah, okay, thank you. That second part wasn't included. It was only to receive the report at this time.
Uh, thank you. And Council Mattis, you still have your hand up. Did you have any further?
Only only to say that that council directs staff to apply for B C recognition should not be there.
Okay, thank you. And C A O.
Many buttons to hit. Thank you, Madam Chair. With regards to the second part where it's to apply for an age-friendly B C recognition, we need to apply for that in order for us to or anyone in the community to apply for any funding. So we need to make sure that we are recognized by the British Columbia age-friendly people to have that little feather in our hat, and then that allows other agencies to apply for funding.
Thank you, C A O. Any corporate officer?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I don't, I can't raise my hand because I'm the host. As well with the application for the age-friendly B C recognition, that was a part of our application to U V C M, so it is grant contingent as well.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for the motion on the table? Is anyone opposed? And that motion carries. And I'll ask if anyone would entertain moving the second portion of the recommendation. Council Ben Camilla.
Yeah, I I would like to move that second portion there that council directs staff to apply for age-friendly B C recognition. But also, well, I'll wait and see if there's a second or, and then I had a comment.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Um, well, I had the same question that you did, Counselor Grace, when I would read through to the end, and there's a five-year plan with yearly updates and that sort of thing, and wondered where that work would fall. There, there was, I I agree with Counselor Mattis. It was nice to read in the report. Obviously, there's lots of areas for opportunity, but a lot of things that we are doing right. And there was mentioned in the presentation of the working group being open to the idea of continuing this work. And so I wonder if that's where some of this follow-up or basically just keeping an age-friendly lens on as on issues and our strategic plan as we move forward?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on that, just seeing as I sat on the committee, but maybe Kathleen or Anne Marie would want to as well, if they're still here. It it was mentioned that perhaps the Healthy Living Coalition would be a place for this plan to move to. However, I think there were some some concerns around that that group as well and and sort of the support that they're receiving. But I don't want to get too far into the weeds on that. But I don't know if maybe Kath or the corporate officer, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair Grace. With the age-friendly report, I believe the intent is for it, you know, we'll have that age-friendly lens through our checklist staff when we are bringing forward services or reviewing services in the community, but also that it'll form part of our council's guiding documents. So when, when it becomes a part of your guiding documents, you know, reviewing it at strategic priorities, you know, those documents are always on hand, so you're keeping abreast of it, and staff are keeping abreast of it through that checklist process in our reporting. That's part of it.
Thank you, corporate officer. There's some things up for me anyways. Any other questions or comments? Okay, but, oh, Mayor Johansson.
Sorry, I was slow with my mouth, Chair. So we're going to apply for age-friendly B C recognition. Have we reached the bar that we would that we needed to reach to be able to get acknowledged as the age-friendly municipality? I know Acelius was recognized last year, I believe. Just kind of wondering where, you know, we're applying, we did this report and stuff. Are we at the point where where we would be successful? Or am I misunderstanding something?
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. I think probably the corporate officer could answer that for us.
I might defer to Kathleen or Anne Marie, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Absolutely. Kathleen, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. So the short answer is yes, you have ticked all the boxes, basically all that's left. Now that this has been received by by Mayor and Council, is to fill out an application form, which is just a few pages long. It just explains there are sort of four main steps that need to be taken, and all of this has already been done. So first, when you first decided and approved as council to apply for the funding and then undertake this project, that was the first step. Putting together the working group, that was another step. Undertaking the assessment, that was the third step, and then fourth was developing and publishing the action plan. So all that's left really now is to to fill out the paperwork, attach the the report, and a bit of other documentation to that application form, and then submit it.
Thank you. Well, that answered my question, and I would be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor Johansson. Thank you, Kathleen. And Council Ben Camilla, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just have another question that came to mind. Thank you. So the next round of funding that was mentioned, are there specific projects in here that we would be looking to apply for that funding for?
And who would like to answer that question?
I believe the Pickleball people want to apply for some funding.
That's right.
Thank you, C A O.
That's what started this whole age-friendly assessment plan to be put into place so that they could apply for some funding.
Okay, that that makes sense. And I mean, I guess that's why it just, it just shows that that continual review of the document or somebody keeping an eye on it is important, because as additional funding opportunities come up, there are some things there that could, you know, potentially be ticked off. But there's a, you know, priority list, which is more fair.
Thank you, Council Ben Camilla. Any other questions or comments? And is anyone opposed to the motion? And hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to public question period. Oh, Corporate Officer.
You're on mute.
Jeez. Oh, no, I'm not.
Waiting goodbye to Kathleen and Anne Marie.
Thank you. Corporate Officer, I don't see any attendees, but I'll just double-check with you that there are none.
Zero attendees.
Thank you. Then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you. And second please?
I can.
Any discussion? And is anyone opposed? And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you at seven.